All right, let's get started. Welcome to the Springfield City Council Meeting Committee of the whole meeting. We're joined by a number of people in the Situation Room. Chief of Staff Tom Ash, Commissioner Helen Colton Harris, as well as Solicitor Bakula. We're also joined by Superintendent Danny Warwick. And then we're joined by a number of my colleagues. I see Councilor Allen, Councilor Ramos, Councilor Letterman, Councilor Edwards, and Councilor Whitfield. I also see Mr. Brown. Not 100, how are you, Mr. Brown?
I'm doing well. I'm just, we had a bit of conflict, so TJ couldn't make it for this meeting. So I was going to cover any finance questions for him.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for introducing yourself, Mr. Brown. So we'll get started. We haven't met in a number of weeks, so I'm sure there's a lot of information that we want to get out there and we want to get to our constituents. So we'll start with Commissioner Helen Colton Harris. And if there are any updates from the administration and/or the solicitor, we'll go into that after, and then we'll conclude with Superintendent Warwick, and then we'll open it up for questions. So the floor is yours, Commissioner. I think you guys might need to unmute.
Harris being selected to be the Vice President of the United States. As you know, she is a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha sorority, the first sorority of African-American trained women in the United States. Marguerite Hurst is also a member of that sorority. I thought I would bring that up. She's also a graduate of Harvard University, as is my brother and my daughter, and I believe Marguerite Hurst as well. I'm glad I'm bringing that up. She's also a member of the Lynx, which is also another organization that I belong to. So I will be wearing Alpha Kappa Alpha until November. I will be wearing pink and green till November. So I just want everybody to understand, while I'm not being partisan, I am very proud of the woman who was selected and her qualifications. Having said that, I will move into my report. It has been some time since we've met with each other, and I will start with the data. The confirmed cases in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as of yesterday was 113,198. I'm going to move directly to the city of Springfield. At this point, the confirmed cases. Now, I want to remind you that I don't count the probable cases in my report. Probable cases are cases that have positive antibodies and positive serology and symptoms, but have not had a positive test. Nor I nor our medical centers count those cases in the reports that we give you. We do not count the probable. So in the city of Springfield, our confirmed cases, 2,910. Therein lies the discrepancy between what you read from the Commonwealth and what I report to you. We are doing well in the city as far as cases are concerned. From my estimate, you know that Martin Luther King, New York Citizens Council, were tested. There were 135, I'm sorry, 37 that were tested between those two entities. All were negative. So that is good news for us. Both of those testing sites came back negative. Tapestry tested 85 in the Southland. That was done on Tuesday and then, I'm sorry, that was done on Friday. Then on Tuesday, they tested 135 individuals at Kennet Flick. We do not have those results as of yet, but what I can tell you is that our positive cases will probably go up slightly based on those results coming in, if there are positives. Hopefully, the trend remains that we had at the homeless site, now at Martin Luther King, now at New York Citizens Council, where we are seeing negative results. Tapestry will be at Kennedy on Friday. We wanted to get something a little closer to Indian Orkans that those residents could have access to a testing site. So they will be at Kennedy on Friday, which is tomorrow. And we will report that to you. As you know, the governor has extended the testing until September 12th. I want to thank each and every one of you who have advocated for additional testing. That made a difference because it has been extended across the Commonwealth. So again, thank you to you and thank you to the Western Mass delegation. It certainly goes without saying, thank you to the mayor. The hospitalizations in our region is up. So the hospitalizations were around 31. We saw 24 yesterday, new hospitalizations. So the hospitalizations in the Commonwealth are up, and they are up in the Western region. There are currently 47 individuals hospitalized in Bay State Medical Center. Nine are in the ICU at, I'm sorry, three are in the ICU. At Mercy Medical Center, there are nine hospitalized. Two are in the ICU. So we are seeing an uptick in hospitalizations, not just in the city of Springfield, but in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Deaths. So let me just go over just a couple of data points. On August 10th, we had seven cases. August 11th, seven cases. On August 12th, seven cases. So the only days we had two or in the double digits last week was August 6th and July 30th, I'm sorry, over the last two weeks. So congratulations to the residents of the city. We are doing well. Let me move into the deaths. The confirmed deaths in Hampton County is 717, and Springfield is 130 of those deaths. 56 are white, 41 are Hispanic, 31 are, I'm sorry, 23, wait a minute. 31 are black, yes, and then two are Asian. So let me say that again. 56 white, 41 Hispanic, 31 black, two Asians. 73 of those are residential addresses. And now, those individuals could have expired or died in a long-term care facility, but the addresses that we get, in some cases, may be their home address. So 73 had residential addresses, 57 had long-term care addresses. And so we are at 130 in the city. Any loss is too much, and we certainly are very much concerned with our parents and those individuals who are dealing with the loss in their family. The other things that we have been working on is we have been working with the school department, and I know that the superintendent is on the call. And so he will talk a little bit about the decision that was made to go remotely. We did, as a Board of Health, sign off with the superintendent on his recommendations. Two of the considerations that we were concerned about that I think the rest of the country really does need to pay attention to, and I think we in the city of Springfield have taken the opportunity to look at our buildings, look at the air exchange, not necessarily the air quality. The air quality in our schools, you know, are very good, but the air exchange and the airflow, it has been the recommendation of the Commonwealth that we open windows to keep an air exchange. Well, we know that's not going to be possible in the winter. And so we need to at least be able to present to the superintendent and the school committee the air exchange for the buildings in our school district. So we are continuing to do that, and we expect that we will have that report in six weeks. The cases, as you looked at the Commonwealth, they have now changed how they're reporting cases. They have a red, yellow, and green metrics. The city of Springfield is yellow, which is four to eight cases per 100,000 population. So we are moderate risk at this point. So the surveillance that we're asking Bob Kirchner, who is an industrial hygienist, to do with our schools is surveillance, and it's the collection of the data. And this data has to do with airflow. That's in Springfield Public Schools. It's a guide that we use as public health in order to make decisions. And then mitigation would be our next step, which is making potential structural changes that might need to happen. And we don't know what that is right now. We will wait for that report. The other things that I think have been important is that we are currently working with all of the colleges to have that discussion as far as how are we going to work together as we try to defeat this virus. You know that they are going to, Springfield College has decided to bring individuals back on campus to leave Western New England as well. We have had conversations with STCC. We've had conversations with the majority of the Springfield schools, and what we have to do is come up with a uniform policy across all schools that looks at how are we going to behave if someone is positive on campus? Who is going to do the contact tracing? Who is going to do the notification? All of that is going to come through the Board of Health. There's no doubt, because we have the nation system. But how do we behave as a municipality? And then how do we support the colleges? And how do the colleges support us should something happen that we need to make sure we're attempting to mitigate? Those conversations are ongoing. Some of them are looking at testing once a week. Some are looking at testing once a month. But again, I would like for Springfield, there'd be some uniformity. These students will be in our environment, and so we know that if there's a COVID positive case on the campus, it could have an impact in our residential neighborhoods as well. So I do want to make sure that whatever we set up, we're able to do across all of our hospital, our hospital systems. In addition, the City Hall, we, I have gone to every department in City Hall to look at what recommendations might need to be made should we decide, when we decide at some point to bring everyone back. So we went through and made some, took some notes, and those notes will be presented to the administration around what we think are the structural things that need to happen internally. The other thing is looking at what we need to do to make sure that, and we are today looking at the City Council chambers, and we did look at the City Clerk's office. Our goal is to make sure whenever city employees are together, that if they're within six feet of each other, they have face coverings, and they are socially distanced, and they are washing their hands. It's important, and we just have a challenge. I think sometimes because Massachusetts is low and case count relatively, looking at the entire country, that people may relax as far as using their common sense and good judgment and looking at the public health infrastructure and metrics that we've asked them to put in place. I think Counselor Letterman, thank you. The plastic bag ordinance, I think you all are aware of that, has been extended until January of 2021. I do want to thank Counselor Letterman for his leadership on that. I think it's important that we made that decision, and I certainly concur with the recommendation. And I appreciate the fact that Counselor Letterman reached out to the mayor and myself to make sure that we were at least aware of what his recommendation was. Senior meals, since March, we have delivered 14,490 meals to our seniors. We are doing 123 individuals every day. That is, and those meals are being delivered by vanpool. And we are excited that we are going to certainly be changing our vendor, we think shortly, because we need to engage another process for delivery. So we are looking at making a change soon. The libraries are still doing curbside. We are, as a municipality, assessing as well all of our libraries, buildings, to see if there are structural changes or anything that needs to happen in each one of those libraries to make sure that the staff is safe. The union has already asked very specific questions about the buildings. We're going to use the same process that we're using for school department, which is have our industrial hygienists work with us and looking at those buildings to make recommendations to make sure, again, the air quality is fine. We're talking about air, air exchange. And none of our buildings, from an air exchange perspective, were meant to deal with such a contagious virus. And so we want to make sure that we're keeping everyone safe. The changes in gatherings, you've probably seen that. It was 100 outdoors. It is now 50 outdoors. The interior number has stayed the same at 25. Homelessness, the homeless tent has been shuttered. It is not operational at this point, I believe. And I would thank STCC and their foundation for the work that they've, they've done with us on that. You, we just left the heat wave. We opened cooling centers for the city in four sites. We could not use schools, because 18 of those schools, I believe, are being used for meal sites. So we tried to use buildings where we had control, but certainly that we were able to make sure we were providing in each neighborhood a place for our residents to go should they need to. West Nile virus, triple E, are also viruses that we are working with our residents around. You know that there are mosquito traps in Western Massachusetts and in the city of Springfield. And DPH comes and takes the mosquitoes out of the trap. They test them, and then they call us and say, "We found a mosquito in the trap in Springfield, and we want you to be aware of that." So far, I have not gotten that call that they have found mosquitoes that either have West Nile or that have triple E. None of our residents have been impacted, so there have been no positive cases in the Western region. We supported two venues, will support two venues that are happening in our city. Last weekend, there was an event on the city in Court Square, and it went well. We had two police stations down there. We also had Park Department and Health and Human Services employees there, and we believe that it went well. Let me say that there were no complaints about that. This weekend, we are supporting an event for peaceful roots that will happen in Deverry. We are continuing to work with them. They understand. We will also have police there. We'll have our staff there. We'll continue to do what we need to do to be supportive. What is happening, I'm sure you know, is that, you know, there are venues that we can't have, like a stone soul. And people just want to have a venue where they can at least experience on a small scale, something where they are working together. The, well, you know, the, I'll let someone else talk about the, any policy decisions that have been implemented. But let me stop there and see if, you know, that Rhode Island has been added to the list of places that if you travel to, the travel orders. Rhode Island has been let, and the other New England states are okay, but Rhode Island has been added to our travel restrictive order. So if you go out of town anywhere other than the New England states and then add Rhode Island to that, you have got to either fill out that travel order form or you have got to have a negative test when you come back in or quarantine for two weeks. So the travel orders remain in effect. And again, outdoor gatherings, I told you, have been reduced. A lot of information, but I missed you all. And so I thought I would try to give you everything that I had at this point. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're actually going to save questions until the end, because I'm sure there are a lot of other folks with a lot of the critical information that I know they want to make sure they get across. Tom, did you have anything that you wanted to add, or the solicitor?
Wait, Council President, I know you had special interest in hearing from the superintendent, so I don't want to take any time away from that. So we'll wait until the end to the questions.
Okay, sounds good. Superintendent Warwick, thank you so much for joining us.
Justin, thanks for having me.
If you could just give us an update as to, you know, what the outlook is for this coming school year. It'd be greatly appreciated. And any other pertinent information that you have to offer will certainly entertain that at this time, and we appreciate you joining us.
Thanks, Justin. Well, to begin with, as Helen said, the school committee, I think, made a very wise decision Thursday night. They voted unanimously to open remotely. It was clear, we had worked for the last six months on a reopening plan to try to open in a hybrid manner. And we actually could have met the DESI standards that they passed out for opening. But when Pat Sullivan looked at the standards relative to facilities, which again, didn't come to us until late July, he had questions. We could have met those standards, but he questioned whether those standards were enough to ensure a safe reopening. He suggested having an industrial hygienist, take a look at it, and do a report for us. As you know, we have 57 buildings, and some of them dating back to the late 1800s. So we have a different HVAC system, heating system in every building. So he, out of an abundance of caution, said, "Let's take a look at that and bring a report to school committee." You know, so the industrial hygienist from O'Reilly, Talbot, and Okun is going to go through every building and take a look at the air exchange. Again, our air quality, Pat Sullivan's done a fabulous job in facilities, and the air quality is the best it's ever been and meets all the standards. But the air exchange is different in every building. And he thought, in light of the coronavirus, to bring students in before we had done that complete analysis, wouldn't be a good decision. I think we would also had issues. I think it's no secret that the teachers' unions and parayonions across the state had grave questions about bringing kids in at this juncture. So I think school committee weighed that. It was a unanimous decision that we would open remotely for the first quarter, which ends around November 14th, and then take a look at this industrial hygienist report, work with our health commissioner. I think we're very fortunate in Springfield to have an outstanding facilities department, an outstanding health commissioner that actually have been meeting with our teams since March to work on dealing with this issue and taking their advice and getting their advice to the school committee and a complete report. I feel confident in the decision the school committee made. You see, the rates are rising in Western Mass. Helen spoke more eloquently to that than I can. But, you know, taking a look at all that, I think a wise decision was made. The other thing that, we're very well-equipped to execute a remote plan because we invested in one-to-one technology five years ago. And we made a lot of cuts in our budget to actually be able to do this, but we have laptops for every student. So over the summer, looking at K2, we had a one-to-one, grade three to 12. You know, every other student, K to two. The mayor, out of some emergency funding, was able to get laptops for every K2 student so that we can open remotely. And again, and have a laptop for every student. We've had staff that have been using technology in their classrooms for five years, rather extensively, that have undergone a lot of professional development, are going to get a lot more. We've learned a lot in the spring administration of the remote, even though we were thrust into it late. We were able to get the computers out to every family that requested one. And we're going to work hard now to execute the remote plan and then plan for a hybrid opening should the rates show that that's advisable. And again, we've been leaning heavily on the health commissioner and her team that have been in all of our meetings and supporting us relative to looking at those rates and making a good decision relative to what is safe for our students and our families. In consulting with the Commissioner of Ed, Jeff Riley, he said in the end that every community should make a decision that's a fit and best for their community. And I'm very pleased with the school committee decision because I think it was the right decision for our community at this time. Now, we'd all love to get the kids back in live situation. We know that that's, that's best educationally, but right now, we just couldn't ensure the health and safety. And one of our school committee members aptly said, "You know, you're taking a look at trying to make the best educational decision, but then the best decision relative to health and safety. And you have to weigh both." And we had to really take the health and safety of our kids and our staff into account in making the decision. And like I say, I'm confident this is the right decision for now. We get a chance to revisit it with more information after we have the industrial hygienist report, which I expect in six to eight weeks, from O'Reilly, Talbot, and Okun. And then the rates at the time. Plus, we're going to get an opportunity. A lot of other school systems are trying hybrid. We have a hybrid plan that we have ready to execute should the rates drop, should this industrial hygienist report turn out to be positive. We're ready to return students in a hybrid manner. We did a complete parametric analysis of the space in all of our buildings, took a look at everything. It's clear that full return was impossible for us because given the number of students and the square footage in all of our classrooms, we couldn't do the six-foot guidance from CDC. And we thought going down to a three-foot guidance, especially when students were going to have to eat in the classrooms, was not feasible. So we were looking at a hybrid model where we'd bring the students in days a week and do remote three days a week so we could bring in, you know, about 40% of our students. One thing from the beginning that was clear in the DESI guidance was any family could make a decision. We did a poll in the spring. We're doing one now. And we went beyond the poll and actually had staff from the schools actually call every family, and they're working on that again now. Should we return hybrid, a parent can make the decision to stay remote only, and we would provide full service to those students in a remote manner while we're bringing kids in hybrid. So every family is going to have an opportunity to make a decision when and if we're ready to go back in a hybrid situation as to what is best for them. We also asked the question relative to transportation. If they wanted to use the transportation system, they don't have to. And if they felt more comfortable driving or were the students using the transportation system. So we'll have a lot more information for school committee to make a better decision in the fall. A lot of, like I said, the DESI guidance came out late. We got reports to the school committee relative to all of that guidance and a recommendation. And I think they made a great decision with the remote opening. Our job is to focus on that now, execute the remote plan well, and then wait for an opportunity when we're sure of the safety. And again, we'll be leaning heavily on our health commissioner, who's been outstanding with us, to make the best decision for our kids from a health and safety standpoint and our educational professionals relative to the educational piece and what we can do that's best for our community at that time. Again, we'll get a relook at it after the first quarter and then make another decision relative to how we move forward. One thing that was clear in all the DESI guidance from the commissioner is we had to have three plans. And I think that was good guidance. It was very difficult for the school systems. But a full reentry plan, when we get far enough along with this, we don't need the six-foot guidance in Springfield. Full reentry was not an option for us right now, but should the conditions change radically, we'd be ready to do that. But this hybrid plan, have that ready so that we can pivot from plan to plan as the cases change in each geographic area to take a look at things and be ready to pivot smoothly and be able to implement, you know, up to three plans within a given school year should the situation dictate a change is necessary. And that's what our team has prepared us to do.
Thank you, Superintendent. We will now open it up for questions for either the superintendent or for the commissioner at this point in time. I see Counselor Whitfield. Your hand is raised in the queue, followed by Counselor Letterman.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Commissioner, for your updates. It was a lot, but it was needed information. Thank you, Superintendent, for your updates. I think the best decision was made for the students and the families. I was hearing a lot of concerns in the community about sending the kids back. But I also hear concerns about the younger learners, like kindergarten, first grade, second grade, just learning to read as far as their attention span. Do you know if there's a special plan for those younger learners? Like, how are they going to get everything they need in a computer setting? You know, with their attention span being what it is?
Yeah, so we have set up a plan, and their grade-level teachers will be on with them for the school day and be ready to implement the plan. We have the technology to put that plan forth and operate it safely. I'm not going to tell anyone that having the kids in school five days a week wouldn't be better educationally than a be better educationally than operating remotely, but we have iReady programs and we have the technology to deliver live instruction to the kids as well as a lot of programs to help them with their reading and helping them move forward. Um, again, no one would, or I certainly wouldn't argue that bringing their kids back five days is best educationally, but right now, it just wouldn't be safe. But we're ready to give them a quality remote program that's actually a fit for their age and their grade level, that's all mapped out for an entire school day, so they'll have a full school day of work that's appropriate for them at their, uh, age level development level. So we're prepared to do that, and we have the technology to do it. And when we need to open up hybrid, we'd be prepared to do that as well because we'd love to get our kids back in live, like you said, because we know we could do an even better job.
I mean, I think that you guys are doing great. I, I like the decision that was made. Um, the other question that I have, is there any type of training for the parents or guardians that they can go through so they can be able to help the children? I, I, I don't know if you were on, well, I think you were on when I, when I talked about having my niece and nephews here for like four days, and they had school, and it was like kindergarten, um, fifth grade and seventh or sixth grade, fourth and sixth, I think, and everything was different for every school.
Great.
The chapter, um, just to look at it was difficult. Um, so is there anything in place for the parents or guardians because it is tough?
Yeah, no question about it, uh, no question about it. Well, what we did was when we opened in the spring and had to change, as you know, over a weekend to get ready for a remote plan, we let every teacher use whatever piece of technology they were most comfortable with to get going. So trying to get the most opportunity for teachers to be creative and reach out to their students. So teachers were using a lot of different platforms to engage the students. What we've done, uh, since then in taking a look at that and getting the feedback you just gave me from a lot of parents is, uh, we've adopted, the state doesn't have one yet, but Springfield has one, one consistent learning management platform. K to five, it's gonna be Schoology, and six to twelve, it's gonna be Unified Classroom. But the products are from the same vendor, so there are gonna be a consistent platform relative to the delivery model, and we're gonna train all our staff this summer when they come back. And Springfield's lucky, we have five days of PD before school opens, and the whole focus is gonna be making sure our staff is up to speed relative to these learning platforms and what they have to deliver, and we're gonna train them in how to deliver a full-day remote program, but with one consistent platform for the two levels. So that should be a big improvement from the spring that we were able to do because we, that was, that was a hard lesson. I think it was the right thing at the time because we wanted the teachers to go and get out and be able to work with the students with what they could work with, but now that we've had time, we're gonna, uh, kick off this, uh, learning management system piece in the fall. We, we're doing some of it in the spring, but not consistently enough, so it should be better for parents. The other thing is just the use of the technology and everything. So the departments are reaching out, um, gonna make training available for parents. We're gonna put some training pieces on YouTube because the one thing was the learning management platform, and then sometimes the, the connectivity and making sure the technology piece. So we're gonna put a lot of training out, uh, for parents, reaching out from the schools and having the technology coordinator from the schools reach out to any family that's having difficulty, helping navigate the system so we can increase our participation and make it use, to make it user-friendly. But we learned a lot this spring, and, uh, we're gonna be able to implement a more consistent, better platform in the fall. But I think that teachers, our teachers did an outstanding job of reaching out this spring, doing the best they could using the technology they had been trained on in the past and they were most comfortable with, but this consistency piece is very important, and we'll have that in place, and we'll make improvements. And each school will be reaching out, any family having difficulty, and just like in the spring, we had up to six contacts with a lot of families, working through issues, making sure we got the technology piece worked out, but also helping the child with the, with the learning piece. So we, we're equipped to move forward with that and offer a much more robust program this fall than we were able to do when we shut down an emergency last spring.
Thank you very much, and I know that we have to move on, Counselor President, I see you. Um, um, final comment is thank you. I, I hope that there could be an orientation or something for the parent, like the week, the parents a week before, I don't know. Um, there was like five thousand people on, on that other meeting, um, that the school department and the, um, school committee has, so I think that that was, um, a great outreach. And I just wanted to say there is an organization that will help mentor, um, children, they do one-on-one mentoring, and I will be sending you a warm, um, a warm introduction to them today, um, Superintendent, just so, um, that you maybe have a conversation on what they offer to, um, the kids while they're at home.
So appreciate that. We're gonna need everyone to pitch in and, uh, help us with this, but, uh, we're ready to get going, and I think we're gonna deliver a quality program, and we start our PD very early. But the other thing I should have mentioned is the state added ten extra days of professional collaboration and planning for each school system, so they reduced our student contact days from one eighty to one seventy. So we're actually gonna have fifteen days upfront to do professional development, professional collaboration and planning. A part of that is gonna be each teacher reaching out to every family, introducing themselves, seeing what they can do to help each family, and that parent outreach will be a key piece that we start before, uh, nine fifteen, when we actually start the remote learning. So that parent outreach will be built into that, so I think it'll help. But yeah, that forum we had the other night with school committee, we did have five thousand people on there, we had it in six different languages, and, uh, we were able to get a lot of, uh, really good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Letterman.
Uh, thanks very much, Mr. President, and, uh, first, my questions are mainly for the Commissioner, Commissioner Colton Harris of, I think she is our, but first, I did want to say, um, uh, thank you to the Superintendent and the school committee, uh, for making the decision to start remote. I agree with Counselor Whitfield, it was the right decision, I support you fully in it, and I also want to thank, uh, you for holding that town hall. I think that was really important to get the, the input from, uh, the parents and the teachers. School Committee Woman Latonya Monroe Naylor had, uh, posted with me a sort of more informal Q and A that I've been doing with some of my colleagues that are on the call as well previously, and we heard many of the same concerns even a couple of weeks earlier when there was even less information available. So, uh, I think the schools are making the absolute right decision, and I also want to recognize, uh, the teachers that had really come forward with the paraprofessionals and the staff, I think, to advocate very strongly, um, to make sure that, you know, we have a safe situation for all of our students. So thank you to the school department for hearing that. Um, Commissioner, I just had a couple of questions for you. First off, thank you, Commissioner, and Tom, the mayor's office, um, for your help with, uh, coming to what I think is a very logical and sound, uh, implementation schedule for the plastic bag ordinance and to my colleagues, um, with, many of us were able to speak about that. Uh, just looking at what some of the other cities we're doing, I mean, most cities are, are going back in September, and I think we all just agreed that was too early for, for Springfield, we hadn't had it implemented before, so I think we have a, a reasonable expectation now set and, uh, still being able to be sensitive to the needs of the business community and residents during this time. Uh, my question is primarily, Commissioner, around the, the stop the spread testing that's ongoing now. Uh, so you said at the beginning of the meeting that you believe, or that the state has expanded that timeline, so when did you say the testing would be occurring now through?
So it will be occurring now through September twelfth.
Okay, and that's good, I mean, it was originally set to end August fourteenth, right?
That's correct.
So will that be, um, will they be scheduling additional sites through Tapestry now with the mobile, uh, setup?
Um, I'm in the process, um, of having conversations with Tapestry that will, I will talk to them tomorrow at two o'clock around their expansion abilities. I've had a call with Bay State Health, uh, and their team, and I'm talking to them about the expansion possibilities. And there's also Fallon. Fallon is, uh, of, of the eastern part of the state, but they tell me that they can come here and potentially do two to three hundred, uh, tests in a single day. And so I am working with those three groups. I should have within the next couple of days a schedule to present, uh, the expansion. Uh, we're looking at areas of the city that we may need to go back to. We're also, uh, thinking about how we involve, um, uh, those individuals in the outer belt as well to, uh, set up testing sites there. It could be we go, uh, to the parking lot at sixteen acres, or we go to the parking lot, um, at Greeley. Not sure yet, but we're looking at different sites. We're also working with the Springfield Housing Authority to look at their sites where they believe, um, they may need additional testing being done. So again, uh, we've gotten a good start with the numbers, and we look forward to that expansion.
Yeah, I, I think that's critical, and I think the, I, I'm glad to hear about being in touch with other partners that might be able to help us expand. One of, I was, you know, we were all glad to see the Stop the Spread Initiative come to Springfield and Western Mass, and the South, the mayor, the city council, the state delegation, had all, it had all, you know, raised quite an uproar with the governor regarding the fact that initially there was no testing sites west of, uh, four ninety-five, and, you know, the, the one thing I will say is I was, um, I'm hopeful to see a testing site in Mason Square, uh, and some of the other areas of the city that, that had not yet had access. And I also noticed when, when we were able to get the, the sites up and running, uh, the only one that seemed to be sort of, uh, ongoing, um, site was AFC Urgent Care on Cooley Street, which certainly I, I support having a testing site there, um, but that was the only permanent one that was sort of, you know, with availability Monday through Friday. The others were the, the Tapestry setups on specific days within a certain amount of time. I'm hopeful that we can see, um, either, you know, sort of a, an increase in Tapestry's availability or Fallon or whoever we contract with, um, to go into more neighborhoods and also, um, if possible, see, uh, even through the community health centers or Bay State or, or anybody else, to see more sort of, uh, open availability, such as what was the case at, uh, or my understanding of the case at AFC Urgent Care on Cooley Street, uh, just to try to, just to try to cast as wide a net as possible. Um, so I'm hopeful when we're, when we see that, that, you know, increased conversation happening, that Mason Square and some of the other areas of the city are also considered.
We are probably not gonna work with AFC in this next round, depending on whether, as you know, their test results were taken seven to ten days. That really is ineffective, so I'm not sure how we're going to work with them as we move this forward. Mason Square, um, as you know, they did a closed site at MLK, but yes, we are looking at Mason Square right now, and right now, we're thinking about, um, you know, working with Square One and their parent, parents and the food pantry and entire Mason Square, but setting up in an area where we can at least have, uh, individuals that we know are going to be on site. Uh, so yes, Mason Square is definitely, we understand we need to go there and, uh, set up another testing, uh, site, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. We have thirteen minutes remaining. Counselor Allen, I see your hand raised in the queue. Floor is yours.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mr. President. Uh, my question is for Superintendent Warwick. Um, Danny, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, hybrid versus remote and all that. Um, and I teach at Springfield College, I'm in that discussion at Springfield College, whether my classes will be hybrid, remote, however they're gonna be. The intention, obviously, is everybody's supposed to be on campus, but there obviously could be restrictions to that. Um, but my question is on, uh, educational assessment kind of thing. Uh, you know, people say that the remote learning isn't, um, as good as everybody being in the classroom and all that. Is there any way to assess, or is there any thought being given to how to assess, and like a balancing act to, obviously, nothing's more important than the health of the students, so the decision is, seemed right and, and, and defensible, et cetera, but is work being done to assess, uh, the effectiveness of remote learning versus, uh, in-class learning?
Absolutely. You know, the Commissioner's looking at that, we've been meeting with the Commissioner weekly on, um, looking at assessment. Uh, right now, the Commissioner is thinking of still leaving the MCAS in place as an assessment system. Now, right now, I think that's a little controversial across the state, uh, because of the, the way it had been administered in the past, but of course, part of the accountability, uh, system you have in Massachusetts as part of the state law is having an MCAS system for assessment accountability. It's also part of the federal law, so that assessment accountability will remain in place. They waived it last year because we're not gonna, we didn't have the kids with us in the spring, but the plan right now is potentially, and there's a debate going on about this, do we use that relative to, uh, student progress in the spring again when we usually give the MCAS system? We have a lot of other metrics we use. We, we use Achievement Network to do some interim testing so we can get some, uh, feedback for our teachers to assist in planning on where our kids are relative to meeting the Massachusetts standard at their particular grade level. So there's a host of assessment pieces that are in place, we'll be measuring it, it's good feedback for teachers so they can meet the needs of the kids at their level. So that's a hot topic right now, but, uh, there will be pieces in place for that.
So with you being all remote, um, I guess it doesn't, um, maybe the question doesn't come up as much because everybody will be remote, but, you know, are there situations where some kids could be eventually in a hybrid, where some would be in, in class and some would be remote? Um, I'm facing that with my classes at Springfield College, it's not clear yet, but we might be teaching live to half the class, uh, and on Zoom to the other half the class at the same time. Uh, do you contemplate that type of thing potentially in the future?
We have a complete hybrid plan, Tim, which would be a combination of the live and remote going on simultaneously.
Simultaneously.
We have that contingency plan should the situation dictate that we think it's safe to return the kids to our buildings even under a hybrid plan. You see, communities are grappling with that across the Commonwealth right now, but again, I think, uh, the support of our health department, our facilities department. For us, I believe the right decision was made, but it wasn't because we wouldn't have a hybrid plan available. We did have a hybrid plan, a combination of remote and live, ready to go, uh, should the situation dictate.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Uh, if there are no further questions, which I do not, Counselor Letterman.
Sorry, Mr. President.
All right.
I know we had nine minutes left, so just had one more question that I wanted to check in with the Commissioner about, I didn't ask it earlier because I didn't want to keep going if others had questions, but the, uh, question I did have...
We lost you.
We lost you, Counselor Letterman.
Uh, another, can you hear me?
Can you start over?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We lost you for a moment.
Sorry about that, it says my internet connection's unstable. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, I apologize. It was just relative, Commissioner, to earlier you stated, uh, when we took down the temporary, uh, testing tent area for the homeless population, uh, my question was just if we find ourselves in another surge, do we have a plan in place for how to address that?
Yes, uh, Counselor, thank you for asking that question. I have met with Karen Jeffers, who is, uh, Community Support Option, which is the parent entity for Friends of the Homeless, uh, as well as the Rescue Mission. They're in the process of interviewing, as you know, for an executive director, um, Mr. Willoughby is thinking about retiring. Having said that, I met with them both, and they both have isolation and quarantine plans in place should we need to, uh, utilize them in order to, um, facilitate someone who may be positive or may be a person under investigation. So before we took those tents down, we made sure we had something concrete in hand and a commitment, uh, that they would be able to handle any, uh, potential surge.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Letterman. So if there are no, uh, further questions from the council, uh, I will make a statement. Um, and I'll also echo the sentiments of my colleague Counselor Whitfield. Uh, Superintendent, I too am interested in the training that you might potentially be offering, uh, for parents, as I know it's going to be extremely difficult for my four-year-old son to stay in front of whatever computer, uh, or tablet that he might have. So I, I wanna, um, I wanna see exactly what that looks like, and I'm certainly up for the training. Uh, the second, um, point that I want to make or, or ask that I want to make of you, Superintendent, is that it would be nice if you and your staff can create a list as to what it is that businesses and individual community members who wanna pool efforts can do to assist you all. Uh, so if there are things that you need, uh, or things that might be helpful, or ways in which people can get involved, it'd be nice if they had one, uh, place in which they could go to. can get involved, it'd be nice if they had one place in which they could go to look for that information, because I have heard from a number of constituents who understand that we're in such trying times and want to lend their assistance, whether it's monetarily or whether it's actual, you know, sweat equity. And so it'd be nice if they had a way in which they could access that information. So with that said, the administration, Tom and/or the solicitor, did you want to say anything just to wrap us up? We have maybe five minutes. If there's anything that you all want to add in terms of City Hall that might not have been covered or anything else, then you can do so at this time, otherwise we'll close the meeting.
We've been very busy in the Law Department. We may have seen that we just helped the mayor engage services of Honorable Roderick Ireland to advise the mayor on the whole DOJ situation. Judge Ireland, we're going to, I think we're going to benefit from his expertise in consulting services professionally and his integrity and his experience and background, which I think he's uniquely qualified considering he's one of us Springfield natives that I think is going to be very helpful in this challenging time as we move to implement changes in policy, training, accountability, systems within the police department, and help move SPD forward to enhance community trust and in helping to make a better police department. So I think that's an important thing that happened for all of us and for the city, and just want to know, I'm grateful that we're moving forward with that.
Before I get to you, Counselor Whitfield, to wrap us up, Tom, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
Just I think we've covered a lot of ground. I'm glad that Superintendent Warwick was able to join us at your request, but I would leave you with, on behalf of the mayor, to Counsel Edwards, our thoughts are certainly with your family in this difficult time, so I wanted to convey that.
Absolutely, and our condolences also go out to you and your family, Counselor Edwards, as I see you're on the call. So we're certainly sorry to hear about your loss. Thank you also, Tom, for all of your due diligence and assistance to helping to facilitate Superintendent Warwick's presence here today. And my hope is that Counselor Ramos might be able to hold a public safety meeting where we can ask some specific questions around the consulting with Judge Ireland, but I will let Counselor Whitfield wrap us up with her question, and hopefully it doesn't send us down a rabbit hole, as I'm sure there are a number of questions around Judge Ireland and the consulting work that he plans on doing. So Counselor Whitfield, you'll have the last question, and whoever responds, that will be the last response.
Nope, it's not rabbit hole. I wanted to ask, Tim, about revenue. Since July, have we improved in the revenue scenario? How much are we down? This is a quick question because we didn't talk about any of the expenditures or revenue.
Sure. So every Sunday, I look at how the past week is compared to the previous week, the year before. Last week, we were down 30%, $112,000. Normally, that improves a bit because not all the deposits have cleared by Sunday, but overall, we've been improving. So right now, for the beginning of FY '20, July 1st, in our variable revenues, so not including property taxes or state aid, we're down 17%, which is $524,000, which is an improvement. Before, we closed out last year, $4.9 million down, that was about 40% lower. Things have been getting better on the motor vehicle excise. It's very early in the year to talk about property taxes, but so far, things look good. So overall, it's been, especially motor vehicle excise, which was the big factor causing year-over-year declines, we've been trending upwards since about the middle of July.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll probably go to Finance Committee meeting just to get more detail on where we are budget-wise, but thank you for that update.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, and thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Superintendent Warwick, certainly Commissioner, we always appreciate you, and Solicitor, thank you for being present as well. Counselors, have an excellent afternoon, and thank you for joining us.